To order the Monday, April 11th meeting of the Verona Common Council, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll call. Ms. Clark, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilroy.
Here.
I'm sorry.
No, you did right.
Alderperson O'Keefe.
McGilroy.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. So if there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak this evening, we don't have any public hearing or other opportunities for public comment later on in the agenda. So if there's anything that you wish to talk about tonight under the public comment section, now's your opportunity to do that. We would ask that you approach the podium. There should be a sign up sheet if you would sign your name and address. And then also for our benefit and those watching at home, if you would state your name and address, please. So if there's anyone that wishes to speak, please come up. Welcome, Mr. Charles.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name's Jesse Charles. I live at 1234 Cathedral Point Drive here in Verona. And let's see here, I've got a little bit. I'll keep it quick. I know we have a really huge agenda, a couple pages today. So just a couple of points I wanted to make regarding the decision about the Matt's House tonight. So pretty big night, the big night we've been waiting for since last summer when it seemed pretty grim where the Matt's House was headed. And pretty exciting. Now we've got the recommendation for Mr. Roast's plan. The Historical Society backs the plan. And I want to make, I want to tell you guys why and stress why we do. And I have to start just by pointing out for just half a minute the importance of the house. It behooves me to say this every time I get up here, which is it is, this is our last link to our original 1840s, 1850s settlement. There's nothing like it. Important family. Some of the founders of Verona, Civil War veteran grew up in this house. We've lost all the other ones like it, which is part of the reason we come every time and why we care so much. And I think why you guys care too. It kind of came clear in January that you really value the house and its point in Verona's history. Yep, we've lost all the other ones like it. It's sitting there. It's still sitting in the same spot it was in 1848 to 1852, whenever it was built. It's been sitting there. And just imagine Verona swelling and changing all around it all that time. And we've got this one thing which is still sitting right there where it was. And yeah, there's that beautiful house. So we have just three recommendations we want to make tonight. One is we do endorse the Roast's plan. The reason is we passed a motion unanimously three weeks ago that the important thing for us is to preserve the house in its current location. So I know this came up a few weeks ago. We really want it to stay where it is. We don't want to pick it up and move it. And Troy's was the plan that did that. Therefore, we endorse Troy's plan. For other reasons, too. We want to recommend a deed restriction against future demolition be placed on it when you do hand it over to whoever gets it. And we'd like, this was something that Adam and Bill told me about, the idea of a first right of refusal where the city gets the first option to buy it back should it ever change hands again. So reasons we endorse the, the principles we endorse, which then endorse the Roast's plan is, it's got a really good balance between historical integrity and business use. It's got that, I think, that great balance between respecting the historical relevance of it, keeping the major components, and making it something viable a business can succeed in, since I believe the project's too big for our society to do right now. I do want to mention, there wasn't a public comment at the end of the CDA meeting, that the foundation, there was a lot of things said about it last time. It is sound. It should be saved. I did find experts. I found a guy, John Freiberger in Fitchberger, or in Fitchburg, who, who does the restoration work, looked at it, said, "Keep it. Patch it up." I got Ellsworth, Ellsworth Brown from the Historical Society, the director. I got Jim Druger, our, our historical preservation consultant for the state. And they both looked at it. They've been, in their words, thousands of basements. They said, "This one's good. Keep it. Mitigate the water on the outside. That's what you do." So I've had multiple experts and they've all said the same thing, "Keep it." Like, it was a big topic of the last meeting. So I wanted to throw that out there. So we like that idea of Troy's plan. Yeah, and with his proven success with his other endeavors, we think it's a good, a good solid plan. Another thing I want to mention is, don't move the house. Please don't move the house. I have that written on my chest right now. I'll spare you me tearing over my shirt to show you, but please do not move this house. It's, as far as people who really, you know, some people like soccer, some people like history. People who like history, having something where it was is really important. It's kind of the whole game. Where to stand there, put your hand on it, you're putting your hand on 1848. It's, it's all about historical integrity. We, it was talked about, well, what if we picked it up, rotated it, and let us use the basement? We would rather have it stay where it is and not be able to use it than have it moved and get a corner of it. It's that important. It's a pride thing, too. One thing, there was talk about the National Register at the last meeting. This house likely would qualify to get on the Register. And the reason I say that is, I have a completed application from 89, which was approved by the Highway Department. The owner at the time shot it down because he didn't want it being on the Register. Not, if you read that, it's like 20 pages. Most of the things in there are still in this house. So there's a good chance we could get this on the Register, which, we're not pursuing that right now, and we don't need that right now. But we might need it in the future because those tax credits, 40% back on what you spend on it, even though Mr. Roast doesn't need that right now, he doesn't want to pursue it, and we're not pursuing it. You never know if 20 years from now, when it changes hands, someone wants to get those tax credits. And if we've picked it up and moved it, we've destroyed the chance of that. And those tax credits save buildings. So please, please keep it in its spot and don't move it. As far as the deed restriction, I don't know much about the legal side of this, but I do know it, it can be worded to prevent demolition in the future. I think that you guys have all kind of come to see the historical relevance and the uniqueness of this building. And I would encourage you to put this on there. I know more people, Adam couldn't look into the specifics of that. And I heard about this from the people at the Wisconsin Historical Society. And Troy, Mr. Roast is actually for that. He's okay with that. He's not against that. Even, he's a developer who wants to change it. And he thinks putting this protection on, it's not going to affect him. He doesn't want to knock it down. And I think this is just a really good moment for us to put that protection on. So, you know, it's, it's, it's good for the worst case scenario, which is whoever gets the house, their business fails in five years. And now we're, I'm back up here with you guys, showing you more PowerPoints again, probably the same pictures. But it's also important for the best case scenario. Let's say that his business succeeds. It goes on 50, 60 years. It gets handed down to his kids. It gets handed down to their kids. At some point, who knows what's going to happen to it. And if we put that deed restriction on there now, we can at least guarantee that this last treasure of Verona is going to, is going to persist. You know, it's our last one. And I put, everyone's okay with this because Troy's okay with it. I think you guys sounded like you were kind of okay with it in January. And we love the idea. So I think it's kind of a win for everybody. And then the right of refusal is something Adam had told me about, which, if you're going to let them have it for a dollar, I think it's fair to say if they ever do decide to sell it, that the city should have the first opportunity to buy it back. So I guess those are our three recommendations. It's really all I had to say today was, we do back the principles of Troy's plan. We think he'd be a good tenant for it. Please consider the deed restriction and just grab this moment where we're all on the same page, and he's on the same page, and take advantage of it. And then put in the right of refusal. And, you know, my favorite slide, roots and wings, two things we want to make sure are in check here in, in Verona. And this building, the more I've studied it and spent time with it, fallen in love with it, it's become apparent to me that this is both. This one's our roots and this one can be our wings. It can be a great, awesome downtown fixture and a successful business and yet still be there as it was and be preserved. So, yeah, well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening under public comment? If you would, please.
Okay. I just want to comment on.
Would you, would you just give your name and address, please?
I'm calling it over. I've been in Verona all my life, so I'm very disappointed.
Pulling the mic down.
I'm very disappointed because I'd like to get this history of Verona. What do other cities do to support them? It seems like we can't get anybody here in Verona to support our historical society or a place, you know? We have pictures, old pictures, no place to put them. It just seems like nobody cares. And I just feel like it was kind of a letdown after Jesse worked so hard to try to get us going. And it just seems like everybody's like, you know, care. So where do we go from here? I'm just, think that there should be somebody that would want Verona to have a historical place. Almost every other city does, don't they? Who supports them in the other cities? Does anybody know how they get? I mean, there's many of them. They have beautiful, you know, a lot of historical history. But who supports them?
Well, I'll just respond. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about this because I know that Historical Society has done a lot of work. There are a number of municipalities that do have museums. I think when Mr. Charles, when you spoke with Ellsworth Brown from the state, they certainly indicated that more and more communities are getting out of that because we do have levy limits. We have budgets that we need to meet. And there's been many municipalities that are trying to turn their museums over to the state. And the state won't accept them because there's not ongoing funds to sustain them. So, you know, I think it's somewhat unfair to say to the community that, you know, that we don't care about the historical aspects of the city. I think that's an unfair statement. But as to whether the city should be funding all of that, whether it should become part of a city operation, when we have limited amounts of dollars and we have to establish our priorities, it has to fit into the big picture of everything that we're doing. But I do think it's an unfair statement to say that no one in the city cares about the history here.
We have all these beautiful new buildings, the fire station, this building, and, and yet nobody wants to display any of our history pictures. Can't, doesn't someone have a room that we could have that, you know, could even have a place for, like a welcome center with a history of?
Well, it's, and we've had these conversations. So again, I don't want to go into a lot of details here this evening. If there's a welcome center, somebody has to pay for that. Somebody's going to have to pay for the facility, or someone's going to have to pay to rent it. Somebody's going to have to pay to staff it. And there's ongoing expenses. And that's, you know, that's a matter of establishing priorities. And there's certain things that were mandated that we have to do. So, Mr. Steiner?
May I respond a little bit to what you said?
Sure.
Just so you're aware, we do have the first dibs on well number one room. It's down on Park Lane, down the corner there. So we do have a spot, but the well still pumps about 350 gallons a minute. And so it's still worthy. And it's not dying as fast as we were hoping. But I, I'm in your ballpark. I wanted this place to become a museum also. And there's, there's plenty of us who do believe that we should exhibit our stuff from the past. And it will happen. And, and I don't have it in writing, though. Maybe I should get it in writing and signed by everyone who's important because we will have a spot there. And as long as I'm sitting here, I will be pushing for well number one room. It's a nice sized room, little bit off the beaten track, not as up in front center as what we would have had with the Matt's House. But it's still in the downtown, which will bring people to see our, our museum. And then they can do what they want downtown. Thank you for speaking tonight.
I just feel disappointed that we didn't get more time to get more people involved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hankard?
Good evening. Mike Hankard, 100 Park Ave. I wasn't going to speak up, John, but you made me from what you just said. This city, I have to believe this city has a tax situation that is the envy of the state with Epic. So I hear you with priorities and, but, I mean, we buy front end loaders that cost this much. We buy sheds and shacks that cost this much. For the city to have to, they already own it. They got a deal on it. That's awesome. You needed it for the right away. So far, so good. And by the way, no deference to Mr. Roast. I watched the video last time. His proposal is great. If that's what goes down tonight as a citizen, I'll be fine with it. He'll do a good job. We'll have a little bit on the tax rolls, but it's got to be chicken feed compared to what the city's budget is, to what the money this city has. And the, and your, your idea about the Palm House is great. That's a great little building. But it's, it's choice number two, right? Choice number one is the Matt's House. It's right there. It's the history of this city. We own it. And all you got to do is say, "We're going to forego the few dollars of taxes that Mr. Roast would pay us. And we own the greatest piece of history in Verona. And we can set it up to be a museum or to be a, a public space." I think that's the opportunity before you. I think Mr. Roast's proposal is great, but I think it's opportunity number two. You have a group led by Jesse, who was about to amass potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. We already had 50 to 100. I think with, with, with pleas to the Findors of the world, and the Epics of the world, and all these other people, we can fix this thing up really, really well. And then, yes, you will have to pay the taxes, so to speak. You'll have to pay the water bill. You'll have to fix the roof occasionally. But man, really, with our budget, I mean, we are not a sinking ship here. We have a lot of money. So I hope I have made my point well and clear. And again, I appreciate everything you guys do. It's, it's not a slam. It's just an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. The, the good thing about having an annual budget is that it's an annual budget. So there's opportunities for everyone sitting around this bench here this evening, that if you feel that it's important, then we should include something in the budget. But that conversation should be when we have the budget. And we look at funding for the city as a whole. So I support the efforts of the Historical Society. I really do. And they've done a lot of work in this last while. But the Historical Society came to the conclusion that they weren't, were not going to be able to come up with enough money to fund it on their own. And that's why they're supporting this proposal that Mr. Roast has this evening. So again, if there's people in the city that want to see us move forward in that regard, we will be starting the budget conversations very soon. And everyone around this bench has an opportunity to include something in the budget if they'd like to do so. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak this evening? Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak? It's the third and final time for a public comment this evening. Seeing none, we will move on then. Next, we have approval of minutes from the March 28th meeting. Those minutes were included with your packet. What's your pleasure? We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting?
Yeah, there are some additions that need to be made at the very end under item 10B.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. O'Keefe.
I, I think it's just the motion and second weren't all typed out.
That has been corrected.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Under Mayor's business this evening, I just want to congratulate everyone who was up for reelection last week. Everyone that was up for reelection on the Common Council was reelected. So we look forward to working with you for the next year, for some of you, and two years for others, and maybe longer for everyone. I did want to mention that if, if you wish to submit something on your committee appointments as far as your preferences, the deadline to do that is this Friday. So if you have not submitted something, please do so. And then just a reminder that next week, Tuesday, by state statute, is our organizational meeting. So the city council will be meeting next week, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM. So I want to make sure that everyone is aware that that meeting will occur. With that, that concludes my remarks for this evening. So we will go to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to remind everyone that we obviously do have a vacancy on the city council currently from the seat that was held by Alderperson Dale Yurs. We've asked that if anyone is interested in that position, they should submit a letter of interest to the mayor by this Friday, the 15th. And then the council will also be going through a process of doing interviews and selecting a candidate to fill that vacancy on the city council. Also, a couple other meetings coming up that I want to remind people of. The next Dane County Cities and Villages annual meeting will be taking place on May the 11th. That'll be held in the Village of Wanake at 6:30 PM. And that time has been shifted back to allow for people that are also interested in attending the Dane County Housing Summit, which will be taking place on May 11th at the Alliant Energy Center from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And information from Dane County Cities and Villages in their weekly updates will, will include information on both of those meetings. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. It's my understanding the city clerk was intending to make an announcement about some voting stuff. And I'm wondering if, if it'd be possible if she could talk about it now? Because there were some, some delays and some other issues people had with voting this past Tuesday, if that would be all right.
Ms. Clark, do you wish to respond?
Happy to. Thank you. Yeah, we did have some issues, in case you didn't, didn't know, we had an election last Tuesday. And we had 5,436 voters come through our doors. And 633 registrations were processed, 387 of those right here at City Hall. So we did have some lines, unfortunately. I think all in all, though, the day went very well. We have just an excellent election team. I'm very proud of all of them. They really know their stuff. We had some new people as well, who were, were very good at their jobs. The problem that we had primarily was that we had so many registrants and we weren't prepared for that. So in the waiting areas, both here at City Hall and at the library, there were some lines for the registrations. There was some confusion as well. Some voters didn't get to the poll books as quickly as they may have had the greeters been better informed as to how to deal with traffic flow. And I take responsibility for that. That's my job to train those people. So the busiest times during an election day are from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and before work, and 2:30 to 6:30 after school, and when people are on their way home. So those may be times to avoid, if at all possible. I know that, that you can't always do that. But we've taken what we've learned from the election, and we want to use that knowledge to improve on future elections. One of the things that I think will be very important going forward is voter education. Get the word out that if you want to avoid long lines or spending extra time at the polls, you might want to register before election day. Or if you've changed your name or your address, you also have to register. So it's something to think about ahead of time. Some other plans we have, particularly for the November election, is to split the poll books into four sections to more evenly distribute voters. That does require more election inspectors. We also want to put additional laptops into use at the registration tables and put more people on that station. We did try a little experiment with this election. We put out pre-registration tables in the lobbies and the waiting areas so that people could fill out their registration forms before they got to the registration table. And that did seem to help with waiting times. So we'll continue that practice. Improved instructional and directional signage in the waiting areas will also help when we have more people here voting, along with additional greeters to aid with traffic flow. Most of these, as I said, will require additional election inspectors. But we did get a good response from our newspaper ad that we placed in February and March. And we also had a notice at the senior center. Some of those people, as I said, worked at this election last week, and they did very, very well. So those are just a few of the things that we're thinking about doing to make some improvements. And we did hear from a couple of people. And I'm always glad, always glad to hear from people. You have better ideas than I do in most cases. So please contact me if you have any suggestions at all.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Steiner, please.
Ms. Clark, would you react to the labor force in reaction to how they felt about the people who are wanting to vote early? They cannot be here on voting day. The number that they circulated with me was in a neighborhood of 400 individuals voted early. And then those ballots are then processed during the time in which the workers are here. And they have said that it's very high intensity for labor. Would you respond to that, please?
Ms. Clark, if you would, please.
Thank you. Well, we did, we had 810, actually, early voters here in Verona. Most of them in the clerk's office, early voting. And yes, those ballots do have to be processed on election day. We have two people on each shift at each polling place. And that's all they do is process those ballots. When we have a large number of ballots, it of course takes them more time. And when people are at the tabulator, it's a little difficult to get those absentee ballots or early voting ballots through the tabulator. So it is labor intensive, yes. But again, I think we have a great team and they take care of it very well.
Any other questions or comments on the voting? If not, questions for Mr. Burns on his report? Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I just wanted to add that I think overall, the, the election process and the voting process went very smoothly in the city of Verona. And I'd like to thank Ms. Clark as well. She mentioned the excellent team we have. And I think certainly she's done a great job coming in, into the role as a city clerk and working through this process. I think on busy elections, lines are always a challenge, especially for same day registration, that, that we've had long lines in prior elections in the past. I think Ms. Clark and her team have some good ideas of what we can do to try to mitigate that and address that in the future, and certainly support that. But I, I would like to thank her and thank everyone else for the hard work that they did. And the feedback I had from most people is that things went very smoothly on election day.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Burns. Seeing no other questions, we will move to the Engineers' Report. Mr. Monpass, please.
Thank you. You have my report before you. I'd like to highlight the two projects that are, are moving right now. The community park, parking lot, the construction removal is starting this week on that. And I believe tomorrow, they're setting the new girder for the Locust Drive Bridge to begin the expansion and widening on that as well. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Monpass this evening? Seeing none, thank you very much. We will move on then to committee reports. We'll begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-16-007, approving a conditional use permit for Hop House Brewing Company to allow for an outdoor patio with seating to be located at 231 South Main Street with the following conditions. Number one, the outdoor patio fencing shall be a minimum of 48 inches tall. Number two, alcohol consumption shall be limited to the fenced area as shown on the site plan or inside the brewery. All areas where alcohol is consumed shall be monitored by staff. Number three, the fencing gate for the outdoor patio shall comply with the requirements from the Police Department and Building Inspector. Number four, the exit for the patio shall be labeled as an exit only. And number five, use of the outdoor seating area is permitted to operate from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday, and from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGilroy. Mr. Linder?
Yes, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit amendment to allow an outdoor patio seating area for the Hop House Brewing Company located at 231 South Main Street. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on April 6, 2016. The commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. Couple of the items that were talked about was the, the width inside the patio, you know, make sure it's big enough, and felt it was. And then there was some questions about lighting. I believe part of the downtown plan has a light that's going to be going just outside of that that would help light up the area. Those are a couple of the areas that we had talked about in the, in the discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Linder. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Mr. Touche?
Please note that I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, thank you. Any, Ms. Doyle, please?
Thank you. I'd just like to add that it's great to see businesses, especially within our downtown, expanding. And I'm looking forward to seeing the improvements.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-16-007. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is Agenda item 9A2. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-16-008, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use at 160 Kenan Court.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit would allow a true studio to occupy 10,136 square feet of space at 160 Kenan Court. The Plan Commission approved the site plan for the building at the April 6 Plan Commission meeting. The Plan Commission held required public hearing for the The planning commission held required public hearing for the conditional use permit at that meeting and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the permit. I don't know if Mr. Sayer has anything to add at all for that? No, okay.
Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Not seeing any, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-16-008. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 9A3. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-16-009, approving a preliminary plat for Hometown Grove to create 32 single-family lots and 20 zero-lot line lots.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The applicant has submitted a request for a preliminary plat to create 32 single-family parcels and 20 zero-lot line parcels located at 845 Kimball Lane. The 20 zero-lot line parcels will contain the existing townhouses, the relocated four townhouse, house in the future four-unit townhouse building. A previous development was approved for this property in 2014 but never moved forward. Discussion at the planning commission included a single-family lot sizes and stormwater management for the project. The planning commission reviewed the preliminary plat on April 6, 2016 and voted 7-0 to recommend the approval with the following condition, I guess I should have added that to the motion. The developer shall construct privacy fence or landscaping on the condominium property to screen the condominium units from Schubert Street. Defense materials, size, location, and height or landscaping materials shall be provided by, approved by the director of planning and development. Once the fence is constructed or landscaping installed, maintenance of the fence shall be the responsibility of the condominium owners. The fence or landscaping shall be constructed or installed prior to issuance of building permits for the single-family homes. So, I would ask that the condition can be added to the motion.
And Ms. Doyle, are you fine with adding those conditions? Thank you. Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Linder, please.
Yeah, just some of the things we talked about. One of them was, are all the lots buildable? Some look a little bit odd. Developer says, yes, they are. There is no park in this area, so it'll be park fees in lieu of a park for this. From my, what I look, look at this, I think it's an improvement over what was there in the first place. It's got citywide streets instead of smaller ones. There's no alleys. There are some smaller, or there's less lots than before, so there's a little bit bigger lots than there were. And I think overall, it's an improvement over what was there, that was approved in 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Questions or comments? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I had a question. I actually liked what was previously there, but if it's not going to happen, it's not going to happen. But, I'm wondering, is there any like timeline for when this is, project is going to actually like be built? Or are we going to be here, or someone going to be here in two years ago approving something else?
Mr. Sayer, please.
Sure, I know the developer's here tonight, so if I'm incorrect, Mr. Beal, you can correct me. But, I know the applicant is in the process of obtaining permits to move that townhouse. There's a four-unit townhouse that's on the property right now that is in the way of the future roadway called Schubert Street. So, the first step is they'd have to pick that up and move it to the back onto lots 37 to 40. Andy, if you want to pop up the map on the screen, that'd be great. So, the first thing would be to pick up the townhouse that's located here and they would move it to the back of the property here. Once that townhouse is relocated, they could then construct the roadway coming into the property. They probably would do it all as one phase of construction. The next step in this process, if the preliminary plat is approved, the applicant would need to come back with the final plat and also rezoning of the property as well. Currently, there's a PUD on this property that has to be removed as part of the process. Assuming the platting comes back, the rezoning, the entrance to developer's room with the city, I think potentially the streets could be installed late summer, early fall, and you could potentially break in ground out here maybe in the late fall, depending on how quick the developer's moving. But, I do know the developer is very anxious to move forward with this and to get this process moving.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in the past, I know we've had some drainage issues where water on the, that are, on the property that's adjacent to the condominiums has historically run through the condominium property. I know that the owner had done some adjustments to improve that. I know TDS had made some digging that undid some of those improvements, but I think has been addressed. I'm just concerned that this could happen again. Is there any kind of protections we can put in for the condo owners to make sure that water doesn't become an issue again?
Mr. Sayer, please.
Yeah, I think the issue, I think the issue, if I recall correctly, was kind of along this back line here. Is, okay, so I agree, we're talking about the same thing. You know, I think, you know, we've, I think we've, I've talked to the developer about that before. I think that's something they're going to take a look at. I think in the past, they've talked about putting a swell in there potentially to kind of run that water towards the road. But, I think that's something with staff, we can take a look at that as the project goes forward and also as the developer, you know, moves forward with that final plat. We'll make sure the surveyor is carefully looking at that and addressing that issue.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Touche.
The, if I remember right, the original plan that was approved in 2014 had approved the houses to be closer together. Is that not the case here? Are we kind of on city standards again? Is that correct?
I was coughing when you asked your question. Could you just say it again, please?
So, back in 2014, when the Hometown Grove project was approved, we had allowed the homes to be closer together? Has that now been undone and we're back to city standards?
Correct. So, the preliminary plat before you tonight, anything on the screen here, lots 1 through 32, those are lots that conform to the city's CR zoning requirements, community residential zoning requirements. The streets are 66 feet of right-of-way, 36 face-to-face sidewalk, standard terrace, any typical city street. So, any lot shown here in yellow meets the zoning requirements. The orange area is that zero-lot line townhouse development. Those technically will remain a PUD, but everything else will be straight zoning.
No more questions. Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Ricky.
I just want to add that I think this is an improvement, although I liked the smaller lots from the previous plan. I did not like the alleys necessarily or having to have a homeowners association. So, I think not having either of those things is an improvement.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-16-009. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is Agenda Item 9A4. And this is a discussion only for the developers looking for a concept review of the proposed Kettle Creek North subdivision to create 152 single-family lots and 144 multifamily units. I could read the staff report. The applicant has submitted requests for a concept review of a proposed subdivision that would create 152 single-family lots and 144 multifamily units. The proposed development would require an amendment to the north neighborhood plan, preliminary and final plat approval and rezoning. The planning commission discussed the concept at the April 6 planning commission meeting. Discussion from the planning commission including concerns about the inclusion of multifamily, traffic impacts on existing and future roadways, and the location of roadways on the concept. The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. And once again, there's no formal motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Mr. Sayer, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Andy, if you just want to put the concept up on the screen? I believe this was in your packets, but I'll just briefly just go through it very quickly. Anything kind of highlighted in the yellow on the screen here is being planned as a single-family. The orange area is proposed multifamily. There is a park that's planned on the east side of Hemlock. And then there's also a smaller park area as well that would be on the, on the west side of the, I guess, west central side of the development that is part of the wooded area. And there's also some kettles in there as well, too. Also in your packet, too, was a larger concept, kind of expanding out, looking at the neighborhood to the south as well, and also the lands to the north and just how this would potentially kind of tie into that development as well. So, I know the applicant is here tonight as well. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer your questions as you work through this and I'd be happy to answer your questions to me as well.
Questions, comments, feedback? Ms. Doyle, please.
I really like that there's the inclusion of some green space and a proposed park in this development. I did receive some correspondence in regard to safety concerns regarding traffic that might be, come about because of the multifamily. I'd just like to share that statistically speaking, a unit in a multifamily building actually generates less trips per unit than a single-family home does. So, I don't know if people can take that into consideration when considering traffic impacts. Other than that, I'm glad to see something moving forward here or the concept at least and like what I'm seeing so far. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. One is related to traffic. So, my understanding is the area is not zoned for multifamily. I guess this is a question for engineering, but can the streets handle potentially additional traffic? Because it will be a little bit denser than single-family would be.
Mr. Montpass?
The streets, the existing streets in the subdivision are built to city standards, so the traffic impact on them should be negligible as far as structural goes, as far as traffic goes. That would be part of a traffic study that I believe would have been done as the overall development for this. We'd have to go back and look at that. But structurally, they should be fine.
Mr. Linder and then Mr. McIlvery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was glad to see something proposed in here by developers, so I want to thank Mr. Heinrichs for bringing this proposal forward. I don't, I do not like the multifamily here. I think the location of the multifamily, as the north neighborhood plan shows, you know, on the PD and M roadway is the proper spot for that. So, that's kind of my main thing. We did also, I do want to mention that we did talk about a planning commission, like the locate, the location of the north road there, if we could get it on the lot line or not. And also, some of the north, or excuse me, the Zing Road width, too. I don't know if Zing Road is quite, is a little bit narrow, so I don't know if Mr. Montpass could mention that or say anything, but that one is a little bit narrow and people have had questions about if that one can handle any additional traffic or not.
Mr. Montpass?
As far as I understand, it's a normal width city street. I mean, it may look like it's smaller as far as depiction, but I believe it's still 35 face-to-face as a standard street is. I can't tell you exactly. I have not measured it. But, it would appear to me that it's the same width as the rest of them now. Is Hemlock and Tamarack wider? I don't know that either.
Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
You know, I just looked at like the Google Maps, Zing appears to be narrower than Hemlock, but I also have not gone all measured on myself, so I didn't know if you know. So, I've gotten some correspondence, people asking me about that and I should have given you a heads up on that. Sorry.
That's fine. I can certainly look into it. We would have the old plans for that when it was approved to look at street width on that and let you know.
Thank you. Mr. McIlvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of piggyback on Ms. Doyle's comments. How many single-family units do you think could fit into that space that is currently a multifamily? My guess is 36 to 40, maybe more if they put another road in there, but...
Mr. Sayer, please.
I don't know off the top of my head. It's about 5.9 acres. The Hometown Grove project you looked at tonight, roughly five to six acres. I think you're probably looking 25, 30, 35 lots, approximately, just the ballpark.
So, just from a, just from strictly a traffic point of view, even if it's a little bit less, it's still more cars that are, there's still going to be more trip with 144 units there? Yes. That's not a question. I too appreciate that Mr. Heinrichs is bringing something forward. I know I've heard a lot of people wondering when we're going to be able to get some development and that piece of, those pieces of property there. I'm not going to go into great detail about my thoughts about the multifamily, as most of you are aware. I'm not a big supporter of it. I think currently, we're, we're kind of keeping up with the standard that we've set at 50 and I don't think we're building more multifamily or less multifamily. I think it's right about the right amount for what the city has said that it wants to do. That's the, that's the intent, or that's the impression I get when people talk to me about it, so. Other than the multifamily, I would support the proposal. Just do something else with that piece.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery. Mr. Touche, please.
I agree with what Mr. McIlvery had to say. I mean, it feels like the wrong spot's taking it in the middle of such a large area. I look at the north neighborhood in the plan. It just diverts from our original plan. I think multifamily may be more appropriate to put on the outer edges versus in the middle. You know, I definitely appreciate some, Mr. Heinrich bringing, creating some motion here and getting things going. This is great. But, for me, this is not the spot to put it in the middle of the neighborhood, like, and especially in the whole northern neighborhood area. It just doesn't belong there.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Other comments, other feedback? Mr. Diaz, please.
Yeah, I had two comments. One, I think I could potentially support the multifamily if I could be assured that it wouldn't be have a, too bad of a traffic impact on the surrounding neighbors. So, I'm not, I'm not totally against it. Potentially, maybe they could be even moved more towards, more towards Main Street, which I think would diminish the impact. And then I guess my second comment is related to the parks and I'd really like to see one of the parks kept as a natural area. I think, you know, the parks we have that are dedicated towards recreation are great and I think it would be also good to have some areas that are dedicated as natural areas.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Ricky, please.
I just wondered if someone could speak to why the multifamily is in the middle? Does it have something to do with the terrain there and the proposed recreational trail? If someone could just expand on that.
Mr. Sayer, we have Mr., Mr. Heinrichs is in the audience. Tony?
Well, can I tackle the second part of the question? I'll take that part and then Mr. Heinrichs can take the first part of the question. The trail itself is actually a recommendation that came out of our north neighborhood plan. It's not shown in this map, but there was a trail that was recommended connecting Country View Elementary School to the north, to the future elementary school in the north. And ultimately, there'll be a trail connection on an east-west road that will run through the north neighborhood there. So, that trail is a recommendation that comes directly out of the, of the north neighborhood plan.
Mr. Heinrichs?
My name is Tony Heinrichs. I live at 113 Cohiba Court in Verona. Thank you for your consideration and feedback. Greatly appreciated. Might be a long, roundabout answer to get to your question, but how Ron and I started with this project, we kind of felt, we asked, well, who are going to be the users? A lot of people on this committee and the planning commission have a lot of different ideas how we should grow. And so, I guess, one of the things we did was try to kind of touch all the bases, starting with the marketplace. And the marketplace, you know, we started looking at multifamily. There's a little startup company down the road called Epic. And I think they're somewhere around at 9, 10,000 and where they go from here is anybody's guess. So, we asked, so we thought, okay, well, what about the multifamily and could potentially Epic people start using those units there as the crow flies? I'm guessing that's a mile away. So, could they be walking or biking? We also looked at the Millennium buyers. This is a type of housing that's really kind of strong in the current market. These type of buyers like to travel. They like flexibility. I'm guessing most of them don't know how to start a lawnmower. They, they, they want a lot of flexibility in their time, with their time, and yardwork isn't, doesn't seem to be too high on their, high on their list. From that, we thought it was actually just kind of a, that just kind of came to itself when Ron just kind of started sketching things. We thought it was, it's on a, a street that is a collector's street that's going to take them out to the north and to the east. We thought it'd be pretty neat being surrounded by all the green space and trails. We thought it'd be pretty neat being surrounded by all the green space and trails. So when Ron just kind of started mocking it up, that's just kind of how it formulated within the plan itself. We also looked at some CR lots. Those are community residential lots. Those, the intent there is to be a little more, I guess, affordable, you know, in new construction. Try to be price-sensitive, which is, which gets harder and harder to do, but there's the attempt with those CR lots. Then we looked at the next set of lots, a little larger. I get emails, calls quite often, people that currently live in Kettle Creek, and they want to move up. And we feel when you want to move up, you want a third car garage, so you're making those lots a little wider to accommodate for some. Little larger product than what's in Kettle Creek now, and the ability to move up. And then we looked to the far west part of the plan, where we're looking to do some high-end multifamily, larger lots. With larger lots, we're hoping you'll be able to save some of the trees that are in there. And so that is, that's kind of the thrust behind what the plan is. And I guess I'll throw the question back to this governing body. As we were at the Plan Commission, and we are here tonight, we are taking your feedback, and we can look at the feedback, and we can make some modifications and changes. And that's why this is a concept plan. Some people I hear, we don't like CR lots. Some people we hear, we don't like multifamilies. Some people here get more multifamily, and I don't know if there's some direction or guidance, or how we, Ron and I, go from here.
Mr. Steiner?
Tony, when Ron was sitting down to do the brainstorming and the etching and drew you into the discussion and for your opinion on different things, did you take, you guys take the time to look at what this body had created for city planning before you started creating your own thoughts?
Yes, we did. We were fully aware that the plan did not allow for multifamily. I happened to be involved in a new plat over in Fitchburg that has multifamily, and that's where I learned so much about where the demand is. And I had people coming out of the woodwork for multifamily, and I reached out to many people via email and phone number to sit down and have this discussion, and I found some were supportive and some were not, and so, but I think that's, that's the end. If I may have a follow-up.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Steiner.
Thanks, Mayor. I know there's many folks out there who want to be homeowners. And I'm tired of hearing people who want to build these homes tell us that they're trying to meet the needs of a certain company. Yes, we're a very fortunate community, but that's just one part of our community. And this north neighborhood is going to have an effect on a large amount of people on the north side of our city. And those folks had input into the city planning that this board worked on many hours, and a few people, a lot more, in committee work. And then to have a very prominent developer come in and say, well, we think it should be this. And I totally disagree. I think that city plan that we have put together is where we want to go, because we had input from those folks on the north end of town. As we started writing this up and drawing this up and putting our thoughts together a long time ago, and I wish people would follow it. We can bend, but please don't break us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I appreciate that there was a plan put in place for the north neighborhood, but many different developmental indicators show that by having a fully integrated scale of different housing options within the same area, you actually avoid many of the pitfalls that folks commonly associate with multifamily housing. So I would like to say that I like the fact that there are large lots, smaller-sized lots, multifamily, and it allows for a more robust sense of community. I really think that we shouldn't try to segregate folks who have different housing preferences from maybe our own. Myself, I'm thirty years old, I have an eight-year-old daughter and a partner, and we choose to have a smaller environmental footprint by living in an apartment building, and I don't work for Epic. So I think there's lots of folks out there who just choose a different lifestyle than some that go the single-family route.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I'll keep mine very brief this evening. Mr. Heinrichs, Tony, greatly appreciate you coming forward with something. When we talk about demand, there certainly is a demand for single-family homes in the city. That's what I keep hearing over and over and over. If we were all single-family homes, I would support it and tell you right now, tonight, and you and I talked a couple of months ago, and I told you about my concerns. What I keep hearing from people, especially in this area, is that this is planned for single-family homes. They do not want to see multifamily in this area, and I support that. I mean, we have other areas. Every time somebody comes and talks about doing a development in the city, they want to keep hitting us up on multifamily. And I just want to make sure that we aren't overbuilding on multifamily. But specific to this area, I just, I cannot support any multifamily being included in this development. So I know it's no surprise to you, because you and I have talked about this before.
We have, respectfully, yes.
Other questions, other comments? If not, go ahead, Mr. McGilvery.
Just real quick. Tony asked for a little more input and maybe direction, and Tony, just so you know, I don't have a problem with the CR. I think that's a good way to do what you're saying, and maybe get some entry-level homes. I think part of the problem we're seeing is that there's a huge demand for homes in Verona, and even the homes that become available get gobbled up quite quickly, and they're going at a pretty high rate. So I'm glad to see that you did that. I'd be okay with the CR, with that multifamily area that you're proposing there. So if that helps you at all, good. The other comment I would make is, I don't really care what Fitchburg is doing as far as it relates to the city of Verona. I think Fitchburg is making a big mistake with the densities that they are doing. I appreciate what Liz is saying about mixing things in. I think that's, I think that's represented by the plan, the overall plan, not necessarily your plan, but the overall plan that the city put together, to Brad's point. So I think there will be potential for multifamily. It's just not in that particular spot.
Thank you. Ms. Ricky?
Just one more question, since you're still there, Mr. Heinrichs. If you were to, would it be possible, I guess, for you to stick with the master plan and provide some smaller lots in lieu of the apartments? I don't know if that's...
Yeah, I guess, again, we appreciate the feedback, and so I think now we're going to have to digest everybody's comments here, go back to the drawing board and see what we can, you know, come up with and try and get, try and see if we can get something to work.
Mr. Linder?
Yeah, Mr. Heinrichs, so with the feedback, do you expect to come back here or run the Plan Commission anytime soon? Or, not necessarily with this plan, but maybe, you know, tweaked plan or something? Or is it going to go on a back burner for a while?
Good question. I don't have the answer as we stand here tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other additional comments, feedback? If not, Tony, we look forward to working with you in the future. Hopefully, you'll have conversations with staff, and we'll see something.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Linder, anything else from Plan Commission?
Yeah, there was just one other thing I wanted to add. It came up at the Plan Commission meeting that the west end development, there's some earth moving, and we asked about it, and it was, they're doing a permanent retention pond there. People are seeing it right off the highway. That's what they're doing. So I mentioned that. That's all I have.
Thank you. With that, we will move to the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9B1, I will make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. In the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, first being to Baycom Inc. for the police department video system replacement of, that's forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and eight cents. Second being to Ken Burns Inc. for a screening bucket, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And finally, to Midwest Meter Inc. for the water meters, seventy-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. You have heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Are there any questions for the committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling four hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and the bills are approved. Mr. McGilvery, anything else from Finance?
No.
That'd be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C1, I will make a motion to approve a consulting services agreement for the construction-related services for Northern Lights and County Highway PD intersection and County Highway PD from Woods Road to the new Westerly entrance to the Epic Campus.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Touche, please.
This consulting services agreement is for the construction-related services for the Northern Lights County Highway PD intersection and County Highway PD construction from Woods Road to the newly entered, newly Westerly entrance on the Epic Campus. This agreement will provide construction administration, construction observation, and construction staking. The contract is not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
You've heard the explanation. Are there any questions for the committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the consulting services agreement for the construction-related services for Northern Lights and County Highway PD intersection and County Highway PD from Woods Road to the new Westerly entrance to the Epic Campus. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Under item 9C2, I will make a motion to approve Resolution R-16-010, approving an access and property use agreement with Teton Ventures LLC.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
On January 11th of this year, the city awarded a contract for the construction of a municipal parking lot in the downtown on the properties owned by the city at 102 East Park Lane and 108 South Franklin Street. City staff and the owner of the adjacent property where the sow's ear is located, Teton Ventures LLC, have discussed the design of the parking lot and have negotiated an access and property use agreement. This agreement allows for improved access to both parking area and a more efficient parking lot design. Under the terms of the agreement, the city would reconstruct the parking area behind the sow's ear in conjunction with the construction of the new city parking lot. A shared access to the parking lot and public handicap accessible parking stall would be included on the Teton Ventures LLC property. The city would be responsible for snow removal and maintenance of the shared access area, but Teton would be responsible for clearing of the snow from the parking stalls on their property.
Again, you've heard the explanation on the motion. Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I'm not really a big fan of this, the municipal lot that's going in there. However, if it is going to go in, I think it's really great if the city's going to work with neighboring businesses to kind of come up with a good solution to kind of get the most results out of it. So that's why I'm supporting this agreement, even though I don't really support that municipal lot.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Mr. McGilvery, please.
I just thought I, in the spirit of what Mr. Diaz just said, Public Works did work, tried to work with the businesses that were right there by that lot. One of those businesses, which is the Teton LLC, was interested in joining with us to create the larger lot, to work out a deal. The other business was offered the same opportunity but chose not to, so I just thought it was important to get that on the record, that they were offered the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, the motion is before you is to approve Resolution R-16-010. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Under item 9C3, I will make a motion to approve Resolution R-16-011, authorizing the application for a WISDOT Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, grant.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
One of the potential projects identified by the city's bicycle and pedestrian improvement study is the widening and paving of the existing Ice Age National Scenic Trail segment extending from the Military Ridge State Trail junction near Community Park down to Brew Street near Fireman's Park. This project, known as the Ice Age Junction Path Extension, would enhance bicycle and pedestrian safety, provide additional connections between neighborhoods, and improve access to a unique, to a unique recreational area. The city has prepared an application for federal funding through to Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, for 2016 through 2020. The TAP agreement, the TAP grant application requires a local resolution of support. The total estimated construction cost is one million, nine hundred, seventy-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Although this could be constructed in phases, federal funding could potentially be available to fund sixty to eighty percent of the project.
You have heard the explanation. Sorry, I was just checking on something else. You have heard the explanation. Are there questions or comments? Ms. Doyle?
I'd just like to add that I'm glad that we're moving forward with some of the recommendations from the bike and pedestrian study, and wish the committee the best of luck with the grant proposal.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Linder?
My question is, so to talk about paved, does that mean it's going to be asphalt or paved as in gravel? Like a hard gravel or what?
Mr. Burns, please.
Curious.
The recommendation would be to have a paved asphalt, most likely surface through that area. There are pieces of this that, there are pieces of this that are owned by the city. There are also pieces that are owned by the county and by the Ice Age Trail, so that if this project goes forward, whether it's part of the grant or not, additional design work would need to be done, and it's possible different segments may have different surface types. But the intent would be to have a hard paved surface that's available for both bikes and pedestrians through that entire corridor.
Mr. Linder?
Yeah, just follow up. The reason I was asking is Military Ridge is not paved, and as a, you know, in the past, I've been a runner, not lately, but I've enjoyed the non-paved surface, to be honest. So I'm just wondering if, you know, what the material was. I'm not sure I'm a hundred percent on board having it paved, but at least we can get the process moving.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Other questions, comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-16-001. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, anything else from Public Works Sewer and Water?
That is all.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Safety and Welfare Committee. I know the committee met earlier this evening. Ms. Ricky, are you reporting on that? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for a premise amendment for the Hop House Brewing Company.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. Ms. Ricky, please.
The Hop House Brewing Company, located at 231 South Main Street, is seeking an amendment to the premise of the liquor license in order to be able to serve in an outdoor patio area. On April 6th, the Plan Commission considered a request for a conditional use permit amendment for the hop house for the outdoor seating area. This area would be accessible from the north door on the building. It would be surrounded by a forty-eight-inch-tall decorative metal fence and would include an alarmed gate... an alarmed gate that would be for emergency exit only. The Public Safety Committee did meet about this, but did not vote because of lack of quorum.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Ricky?
Just that the decorative metal fence would be in keeping with what the city's downtown streetscaping would be like.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation. We do have a motion and a second. Are there questions, comments? Any questions or comments?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll have to abstain.
Okay. Mr. Touche abstains. Any questions, comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve the premise description change for Class B beer and reserve Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for the Hop House Brewing Company, located at 231 South Main Street, to include an outdoor seating area. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Ricky, anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee? Thank you. Next, we are on Agenda Item E1, 9E1, which is discussion and possible action regarding Resolution R-16-012, accepting the proposal from Troy Ross of the, or for the Matt's House located at 101 North Main Street, 100 East Verona Avenue. Mr. Burns, do you want to provide some initial information, please?
Yeah. On March 21st, 2016, a joint committee of the Committee of the Whole and the Community Development Authority met to review two proposals that were received from, by the city for the redevelopment of the Matt's House property located at 101 North Main Street in response to a request for proposals that was issued by the city. The combined membership of the Committee of the Whole and the Community Development Authority voted at that meeting to recommend that the city council accept the proposal submitted by Lake Effect Properties Inc., Troy Ross as president and co-owner. And then, the resolution before you this evening would formally accept that proposal submitted by Lake Effect Properties and Mr. Ross and authorize staff and the city attorney to begin working with Mr. Ross on a development agreement and related documents for the development of the property. And as was discussed earlier this evening, the proposal from Mr. Ross would rehab the house in its current location, maintaining the existing foundation, and the vision for the property would be to have a retail commercial space in the first floor and likely a two-bedroom apartment on the second floor of the property. And the items that we had discussed in the request for proposal process would include, as part of a development agreement, the items that Mr. Charles addressed during public comment, including protections and deed restrictions from the property being torn down, as well as a right of first refusal. And Mr. Ross has indicated that he is acceptable to those type of items being included as part of the documents that we would negotiate. So, the recommendation coming from the Committee of the Whole and the Community Development Authority would be to award the proposal, and that would be staff's recommendation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. We have potential motions or discussion, comments? Mr. Diaz, please.
I'd like to make a motion that the city council accepts the proposal from Troy Ross for the Matt's House, located at 101 North Main Street, 100 East Verona Avenue, with the conditions that Mr. Burns described earlier regarding the right of first refusal and a deed restriction.
Thank you. We do have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. We are open for discussion on the motion. Ms. Doyle?
Not to detract at all from the proposal that we have before us, but it was, you know, really, it was nice to just hear the reiteration of the passion that folks here in Verona have for its history, and I don't want to overstep it at all, but I think everyone here on the council was excited by the Historical Society proposal of creating, creating a historic site and museum and a spot for people to come to Verona, a new attraction and a place for the children of this community to learn more about its history. But, but once we heard from Mr. Charles that he just felt that the Historical Society wasn't up for the financial investment that would be required to really get this building back to its true beauty and also concerns about staffing, I think we were all disappointed and think that this proposal before us is a way to at least salvage the house, get it back to its historic glory and keep it in the community, unlike what has been the fate of so many other historic buildings here in Verona.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. And I would just add to your comments, I agree with your comments. I would add that I would strongly encourage the Historical Society to continue to work with the city council, with others in the cities, and possibly even with Mr. Ross as he, as he fixes the house and restores the house. This isn't the final decision that's happening here tonight on the fate of the Historical Society. So, I commend you for the work that you've done. I'm very happy that you have taken a position and that you're supporting this effort, and I would encourage you to keep the conversations going. Mr. Touche?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've, since our Committee of the Whole meeting, I've really been struggling with this, you know. Over the last two years, I've heard a lot about downtown development and doing things downtown and exciting and, you know, as, as I said last time, you know, Troy's proposal is a safe proposal. It keeps it where it is, doesn't really do a whole lot with the building. He talks about getting tenants upstairs, not quite sure what he's going to do downstairs. You know, it, he made, he made a statement that really stuck with me. He said, if we're really serious about doing something downtown, he'd pick up the building, move it four or five blocks down, and do something with that property. And, you know, right there, it's like vision. This guy's, you know, he's talking about doing something exciting, yet still preserving the house, which I think is important for Historical Society. It's important for me. It's, it's just the location is where we could do something exciting. I do want to save the house. That is a priority for me. You know, if I can save the house and still do something exciting, that's a win-win. And as much as I want to give the Historical Society a place to put their pictures, to put our history, it, for me, it's, this is a safe plan, as I said before. Hey, some developer's going to come in, save the house, it's going to stay the way it is. We haven't done anything to help drive downtown, done anything dangerous. And when I say dangerous, I mean it's taking a chance. We're going to be spending money to try to improve our downtown, and for me, doing this isn't accomplishing that. All it's done is save the house, which is great. That's one of those goals, but it hasn't done anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Other comments? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I heard, you know, from public comment how people wanted more, but, but, and I totally understand that, but I think this is, Troy's proposal is the best way to save the house. I think it actually, pardon my cynicism, but I think the private market is better, you have a better chance of preserving history if it's based on the private market. I wish, I wish our budgets, our budget is very, very good, but you never know what might happen in the future and when people look to cuts, I mean, that would be like the first thing the city, a future city council might look to cut. So, I actually think this is really the best way to preserve it for the city. I think that it's actually a good part of the downtown. We want our downtown to be unique. We don't, you know, for example, like I love Mount Harb's downtown. It's got a really great downtown, but that's how Mount Harb is. And if we should set out to copy that, or we set out to copy Mangrove Street in Madison or wherever else looked nice, you know, it wouldn't be something unique to Verona. And if you want to talk about what's unique to Verona, I think, I think the Matt's House would be one of the main architectural things that springs to mind. So, I'm definitely all in favor of Troy's proposal. I just wanted to comment too, that I think if the Historical Society had not acted, the building would probably be already torn down. There's very little doubt in my mind that if there hadn't been an outpouring of public support, the building would probably be gone. So, I just want to actually extend my thanks to the, to the public who came forward and let the city council know that this was an important building. And then, just commenting general on historical preservation, I think the city could do more to preserve our history, whether it's through a historical center, whether it's through some other sort of historical preservation ordinances where we maybe we slow down, tearing down some buildings to kind of keep, keep some of the unique buildings in the city. I think, I think that's something I would look forward to working with the Historical Society on going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Other comments? Additional feedback? I'm not seeing any. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McGilvery.
I thought you figured that out when I reached for the button.
Mr. McGilvery, please.
Don't we have the Vulcan mind meld going there? No? I wanted to say, I agree with everything you all said. It's good that everybody's interested. I like the comments that we heard tonight. I'm glad we're going to save the building. The one thing I would say, there's a, there's a church that's in Denver that the city could have gone in, bought the church and torn it down, but they didn't. What they did was they, the contractor came in who built the building and he built it over and above the church. So, now there's this beautiful historical church that is the focal point of this massive building down there. I love going down there and seeing that. It was a, it's kind of what you're saying about, you know, moving it necessarily doesn't create that focal point, and I like the idea of keeping the Matt's House there, just because it's, that is what's left of Verona. So, the space it holds, it really is, is every bit as important really as the building itself. I mean, how many times do you look at old foundations and they leave foundations there forever and they, some foundations become historical markers in and of themselves. So, it's, it's pretty neat. I think there's a lot of potential there. I was a little disappointed that the Historical Society couldn't find a way, but ultimately, I'm really glad that they came to that realization. And to Mr. Diaz's point, I think Mr. Ross is probably the guy to get this done and to do it right. It may take us a while, but I think the ultimate goal is to preserve, preserve the house itself. I would like to also piggyback on what Luke said. I think we've got to find a way to help the Historical Society get these artifacts into a place and do it relatively soon. I don't know what that is. I know we're, we're busy with people retiring, going to different communities, there's all these things are in flux, but I really think in the next year it'd be great, Mayor, if we could maybe start building up that steering committee or something to work with the Historical Society if there's a, if Mr. Diaz wants to volunteer to do that. I'm hoping there would be somebody else that would be interested in helping us find a location for, for the memorabilia that really, it should be preserved. It should be displayed. It doesn't, I think Brad said it probably six months ago, it's kind of a shame that we have all this stuff that may just disappear because nobody thinks it's that important. So, thank you all for, for putting the time into this and obviously I'll be supporting the proposal.
Thank you. Any additional comments? We do have a motion before us and a second to approve Resolution R-16-012, accepting the proposal from Troy Ross from the, for the Matt's House located at 101 North Main Street and 100 East Verona Avenue. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Thank you. We are now on to old business. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yeah, since we had the, or the item before us for old business is negotiating strategy related to boundary agreement discussions with the town of Verona. And since the public forum or public informational meeting was held last fall, city and town staff have been working on taking the concept that we had outlined at the public meeting and putting together actual language for a draft boundary agreement. We're now at the point that we have some draft language that's been reviewed by the municipal attorneys. We have the ability to have a meeting in closed session this evening with the city attorney, Brian Kleinemeyer, who will go through and provide his comments and provide an update on where we are with that agreement. It's my understanding that the town board is planning to meet in closed session at a special meeting that'll take place this Wednesday, and what we're hoping is that we can have some final discussion about our position, finalize those items, and then hopefully get to the point that we would have a draft document available for public discussion in the near future and start the public informational process, ultimately leading towards a public hearing and consideration of the agreement. So, with that, city attorney is present this evening, and the recommendation from the city attorney and staff would be to go into closed session and provide the discussion with the attorney in closed session this evening.
You've heard the initial remarks by Mr. Burns. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to go into closed session? If so, I would ask if they would read that portion of the agenda, please. Is there anyone? Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 10A, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of negotiating strategy for a boundary agreement discussion with the town of Verona. The city council may convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.85, parent 1, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery to go into closed session. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. A closed session requires a roll call vote. Ms. Clark, if you'd read the roll, please.
Alderperson Ricky?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
Alderperson Touche?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
No.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
Alderperson Linder?
Aye.
Alderperson McGilvery?
Aye.
The roll call vote to go into closed session passes. We are now in closed session, so. In open session, there is no business or no action coming out of the closed session. Next, we are on Agenda Item Number 11, which is new business discussion and possible action regarding approval of operator licenses. Ms. Clark, please.
Thank you. I have operator licenses for Nathan Duplee, Caden Cradwell, James Jerry, and Pugnali Velisak at Treads, Spencer Schultz at Avantis, Nathan Estervig, Michael Azarov, and Shelby Call at Francois Oil, Brett Middleton and Andrew Dobbins at Mr. Bruce Tap House, and Lucinda Cole at Vincenzo BP.
You've heard the applicants. What's your pleasure? We have a motion by Mr. Linder, seconded by Mr. Touche. Any questions on the applicants? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. We're on to announcements. Any announcements this evening? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. For all the citizens who have been asking lots of questions about the park and rec programs, I'm happy to announce that the Park and Rec Committee is going on the road this week. We are, our conductors are Mr. Dudley and Mr. Walker, and we will be invading every park within the city to evaluate. Listen to any comments. If you want to tag along and follow us around the city, please join us. This is your opportunity to share with us what we see and what we think and what we want to form an idea for the future. And yes, those of you that want a pickle court, we will put it in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other, Ms. Ricky, please.
So, to piggyback on that, if you want to join us, it's from 6:00 to 8:00 this Wednesday night, and we'll be meeting at the Public Works Building, correct? At 6:00, but you can call my cell phone, 845-1328, if you want to join up anytime between 6:00 and 8:00. I also wanted to announce that the Verona Area Community Theater is having three youth productions upcoming this weekend and next weekend, so get your tickets at the VACT website.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Motion carried, and we are adjourned.